Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 28, 2024 New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. If you would please bow with me for a quick word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for another day. We thank you for yesterday, Memorial Day, as we remember those who have given it all for us to be here today, to be able to carry out the business of our city. And dear Lord, we also ask for special prayer and healing for our Congressman Greg Murphy, who underwent surgery today that appeared to be a success. We pray for his continual healing. In your name we pray. Amen. If you would please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Bass?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Okay, everyone's here. Item number three is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? No, not entertaining motion to approve it.
Second.
Say who.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Next up is the introduction of Swiss Bear's new executive director, John Harrelson, the Chair of Swiss Bear. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Alderman. It's my pleasure to be here this evening in my role as Chairman of Swiss Bear to introduce our new executive director. It's Karen Sullivan. Karen is originally from Goldsboro. She has a lot of experience in nonprofits and in private sector business. She's been with some international nonprofits, including Wine to Water and an entity called Rise Against Hunger, and also was with the Wayne County Boys and Girls Club. In addition to that, she ran a private business as an entrepreneur, and so she knows, hopefully, how to make a profit and work with customers. And so we are extremely excited to have Karen joining us and filling Lynn Herrickhouse's shoes and continuing the works of Swiss Bear. So I give you Karen Sullivan.
Would you like to say anything? He gave you a great intro, but... Okay, very good. Welcome. Glad to have you. Okay, next up is item number 10, conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget for FY 2024-2025. Ms. Ostrom.
The city manager's proposed budget in the amount of $155,421,181, which consisted of the general fund in the amount of $50,274,425, including a recommended 3-cent ad valorem tax rate increase, a fund balance appropriation of $580,000, and a 2% COLA increase. The enterprise funds totaled $95,626,279, which includes an estimated rate increase in power cost adjustment fee. And the other funds, consisting of municipal service district, metropolitan planning organization, redevelopment commission, E91, and employee insurance funds in the amount of $9,521,177. Budget work sessions were held with the Board of Alderman last week on May 21st and 22nd, and with the board's recommendation to reduce the tax rate increase from 3 cents to 1 cent, the city manager's budget was amended with a reduction of ad valorem tax revenue to a 1-cent tax rate increase, an additional $50,000 in revenues for increased rates within the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, an increase of $302,675 of fund balance appropriation with a total fund balance appropriation of $882,675. And budget cuts in the amount of $1,076,153, consisting of capital, vehicles, and equipment, dues and subscriptions, travels and training costs, and other miscellaneous items. These adjustments amended the city manager's general fund proposed budget to $49,198,272. The proposed budget has been made available for public inspection at the city clerk's office, the New Bern Craven County Library, and on the city's website. At the May 14 board meeting, a resolution was adopted calling for a public hearing, which we will request at this time.
Okay, does the board have any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to make a comment regarding the proposed budget, please come to the microphone. Is there any information regarding the question? Yes, the budget's posted online. It's also available here at City Hall, that you can view it there.
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed, so there's no further action on this. But again, I think we've shared on social media, as well as our website, where the information can be found for those that would like to view it. Mr. Manager, it is scheduled to have this on our next agenda to adopt. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else on item number 10? Okay, item number 11 is the update on the North Carolina 43 Connector project and consider adopting a resolution in support of naming the Highway 43 connector for Marvin L. Raines, Jr., Mr. Hughes.
So at the last meeting, the board considered tabling this discussion until tonight's meeting. Before you have that discussion, I'm going to ask Deanna Treble, our MPO Administrator, to come up. She's got a PowerPoint presentation. It's going to give you more detail on the proposed Highway 43 connector.
Good evening.
Evening.
So tonight, we want to talk about the NC-43 connector. This project is the construction of about just over one mile of new roadway, as shown on the map, that would connect NC-43 from US 70 to Trent Creek Road and ultimately to US 17. The project itself is actually going to resurface existing roadway, so you'll have a new road alignment or new profile from the entire roadway from 70 to 17 itself. So this project is actually a four-lane divided highway. So each lane is 12 feet in width. It has wide paved shoulders on the outside and a large median in the middle. It's either going to be grass and/or concrete. Throughout this entire project, it's known as controlled access. Controlled access means that through the design process, they've already established where those future driveway connections or intersections will exist. So through this profile, you'll have a brand-new signal at US 70 intersection. Then there's four planned breaks, and then there's going to be a new traffic signal at Savoy Drive and Shadow Brook Lane. So I know this is a lot to look at, but just focus on the dark arrows. So the very first intersection is planned as a future signalized intersection that's going to allow for future development to connect to this planned break. So running north and south, you'll see that the proposed design is a five-lane structure. And then running on what's on the screen, west and east is NC-43, which is the four-lane divided highway. So you'll see that you have dedicated lefts on both sides and a dedicated right on top. The second connection is called a reduced conflict intersection. And you might have seen these before, but basically, it doesn't allow cross connectivity from your north and south connections. So on NC-43, you still have your main movement, and you can go left only. If you wanted to take a left out of your north and south connections, you have to go right to make a U-turn to go left. The third connection, again, is a planned signalized intersection. Through the design of this project, DOT worked with the current landowners on future development plans. And as you can see here, from east to west, you still have the NC-43 connector, which is that four-lane divided highway. And then north and south, you can see that you've got a dedicated left, a dedicated through, and then a through slash right. And then this last connection, again, same concept, two-lane divided on NC-43 with your dedicated lefts. And the north and south connections is your dedicated through, a left, and a right. And then the new sidewalk, or the new signal on Savoy Drive and Shadow Brook, I know there's a lot to look at. Just know that it's, there is going to be a signal there, and each of the subdivisions are going to have a dedicated left out and a dedicated through right. So this project is fully funded. The let date, or the date that DOT plans on advertising construction of this project is July of 2025. They're telling us it's going to be two to three years for construction, but we don't anticipate it being that long. Once they have a contractor in place, we can refine that timeline. And DOT is working on a website that will be, that'll go live soon, that will allow our citizens to ask any questions or field any comments that they might have. And that concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions? Okay, thank you. So next up is to consider the resolution to support naming the Highway 43 connector for Marvin L. Raines, Jr. Mr. Hughes, you have anything you want to add to that?
Nothing else to answer.
Okay. There's a copy of that resolution in our package, slide page.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting naming Highway 43 connector for Marvin L. Raines, Jr.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Alderman Bass?
No.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion fails three of four?
That's correct.
Next up is item number 12, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of an installment financing agreement, deed of trust, and related documents related to financing the acquisition of 212 Kell Road. Ms. Ostrom.
On February 13, 2024, the board approved the execution of an agreement for the purchase of real property located at 212 Kell Road. The request for proposal was issued, soliciting bids to pay for the property acquisition through installment financing or revenue bond act to exceed 2.2 million. After receiving and reviewing six proposals, a recommendation was made to accept the proposal from JP Morgan Chase. A public hearing was held on May 14, at which time the terms of the proposal were shared with the board. The resolution authorizes the execution of an installment financing agreement with JP Morgan and an interest rate of 4.21% with the term of 15 years.
Okay, does the board have questions on item number 12?
There's no questions. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of an installation financing agreement, deed of trust, and related documents related to financing the acquisition of 212 Kell Road.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 13, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of all agreement documents related to the NC Railroad and Norfolk Southern Railroad supplemental line agreement for installation of stormwater force main and drainage structures for the Duffy Field Community Stormwater Enhancements Project Phase One. Mr. Chiles.
Good evening, Board. Mayor, as a part of the ongoing Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement projects, we have, we have to have a force main to an existing outfall. We currently have a perpendicular outfall pipe that's size too small for what we're planning in Phases Two and Three. So we, our plan called for approximately a 2,300-foot linear storm main that runs on the south side of East Rose Street. We tried to plan to have this off of the right-of-way, the 200-foot right-of-way of North Carolina Railroad. Unfortunately, as far as we are, we would have gone into having to bore under houses and structures. So we've got it as far off the pavement to the edge as possible, and it is a vital part of all the stormwater drainage within the area. We currently have a lease for our perpendicular crossing, which is approximately, we pay approximately $5,500 a year for an annual fee. We've gotten the opportunity, after a lot of the negotiation with the North Carolina Railroad, to have a lump sum payment system on this, whether as a lot or done as annual payments with a percentage increase for perpetuity of the use of that section of their right-of-way. The lump sum fortunately has allowed us the opportunity also to use $270,000 of grant funding, which was line item in the engineer's estimate for wetland mitigation. With recent changes to the determination of isolated wetlands, we're no longer going to have to use that money for wetland mitigation, and we can use the grant funding to pay down the lump sum. We'll still, still have a $5,000 annual fee, which is currently, as of this year, will be 500 less than we're, we're paying for our current crossing. So as a vital part of this, I believe the railroad has negotiated with us considerably to get to this point, and we have an opportunity to use grant funding to get it considerably down with also at the end of Phase Two and Three. If there's any remaining grant funding that is unused, we can also apply that to what's remaining in the balance of the lump sum. So our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute these documents.
Does the board have questions or comments?
I do.
Go right ahead.
So George, we pay North Carolina Railroad $5,000 a year? This is...
For, for any utility, not just in public works or stormwater, for any utility that encumbers a portion of their railroad, the user of that space is, pays a fee to the railroad. Yes, ma'am.
So this is, this has, that $5,000 has nothing to do with this contract? This is something that the city has to pay the railroad normally?
The current, the current $5,000 that we're paying $5,500 right now for a perpendicular crossing, much shorter run of pipe.
Okay.
But we're going to abandon that pipe because it's smaller. It doesn't go connect directly to the outfall we need it to, to not create additional flooding on the north side of the tracks. So we're, we're going to basically supplement that $5,500 with this new agreement, and we'll pay, pay down and the opportunity to pay $5,000 a year, which will actually be less than we're paying currently for the encumbrance of that right-of-way.
No other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
This $435,000, just would say $436,000, that's money that the city, and I know some of it is through the $270,000 is, is going to pay, is through the grant. But this $435,000, is this work that the railroad company is going to do for this project, or this is just a...
Unfortunately not. It's, it's for our right to encumber a portion of their property.
Okay.
So it's just as if we're leasing a portion of their property for our use. And this was a little bit higher value property to them because it's in the rail siding section, so the linear footage or the square footage value goes up when you're, when you're getting license agreements to encumber it.
Okay. So now, this is the portion that we're speaking of, is right there where the bridge, like the big covert pipe is located, and the bridge underneath it, is that the area you're speaking of?
This, this force main is going to run from the existing Biddle Street Pond
Okay.
to just about the East Rose Lift Station. So the outfall is the same as the East Rose Lift Station.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking this is because now, when you get ready to do the project there by Evergreen Cemetery, that's going to consist, that's, I know that belongs to the railroad.
Depending on what kind of impacts.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am. Depending on what types of impacts we have.
Okay. So then, at that point in time, we're going to have to come up with another agreement with them and pay them additional monies for...
It depends on the design of what we end up with on the outfall there. Yes, ma'am. But anytime, anywhere in town, any, any city utility that crosses or has to travel along a North Carolina Railroad, there's a fee associated with that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
I do. I have a question. This is for Phase One, correct?
This, this Phase One is the force main. Phase Two and Three are additional wetland and containment areas. We can utilize the Phase Two and Three funding also. That was set aside for the wetland mitigation. That's no longer going to be needed to pay down this. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do you have anything outlined, which I'm sure you do because you just spoke of it, for Phase Two and Three that we could take a look at?
I can provide those to you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We're about to bid, advertise to bid for Phase Two and, Two and Three.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, if I could. It just, it just comes across as being an exorbitant amount of money for...
Can you speak into the mic, please? Can you speak into the mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
It just strikes me as being an exorbitant amount of money that we are being charged by the railroad to bury the force main. And correct me if I'm wrong, George, it's along the edge or close to the edge of the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
Chances are, although, I don't know this for a fact, but chances are that if the railroad ever did any improvements within the right-of-way, chances are they would not go out to the, the very outer edges of the right-of-way with whatever improvement they might do. So there would really be no impact on the buried force main that we're, we're looking to put in. Again, I guess in the long run, it saves the city's money. If you look at the very long term, where the $5,000 or $5,500, which probably escalates every once in a while, is in perpetuity versus this being a lump sum amount. So I guess the city will save money in the, in the long run, but it just seems like they, they could have been a little bit more willing to negotiate a dollar figure that doesn't come across as being so much.
Well...
It is what it is. I'm going to support this, just to keep this project moving forward, but I think the board needs to kind of keep this in the back of our minds when we have future dealings with the railroad, whatever that might be. So just those are my thoughts.
George, I just want to thank you for all your hard work, because I've read some of your correspondence back and forth with the... And I, I, I support this project, but I just thought that that was, that was a large amount of sum of money. But then again, too, there's nothing that we can do to North Carolina Railroad, Norfolk Southern Railroad. I know that, that much, but I, I just had to ask those questions because it was just a large amount of money. And thank you so much for all your hard work. I appreciate you.
And I would like to say that this was not the first number that we received. They did, they did come down a considerable amount and offered us a lump sum payout, which is not their normal, that is not a normal offering of how they do this. Usually on an annual basis.
Mr. Chiles, you probably deal with railroad more on an operational basis than I do, so you can give them that credit. I'm going to say how I really feel, and I think it's pretty sorry that North Carolina Department of Railroad, or whatever you want to call them, when we explained to them that this was a vital project to help remove flooding water from a distressed community. Did they come down some? Sure, but their first number was asinine to begin with. To me, this is certainly not a partnership by any means or stretch of imagination. This is North Carolina Railroad taking advantage of the law and the legal authority that they have to shake down the city of New Bern for this project. That's the way I see it. I know that they want to partner with us on the depot, and I look forward to those negotiations, because I can tell them what they can do with their depot, if they really want to know. But I think this is, this is sorry, the fact that, as Alderman Prill noted, this is on the far edge of their right-of-way. I know that you guys tried to work to get it out of there, but the fact that this is underground and will not affect or disrupt their operation whatsoever, I think is utterly absurd, but I'm going to hold my nose and vote for it because the community needs that drainage. But this is, this is not a partnership. And I'll have some more comments about the railroad under new business. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, please hold your nose and vote for it.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a lot of made Hancock Street a toll road for them.
If there's no more questions by the board, I'd like to make a motion. Mayor, make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of all agreement documents related to the NC Railroad and Norfolk Southern Railroad supplemental line agreement for installation of stormwater force main and drainage structures for the Duffy Field Community Stormwater Enhancements Project Phase One.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number, thank you, George. Item number 14, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY 24. Ms. Ostrom.
The AMI DSM, which is the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Demand Side Management System Enterprise Capital Project Fund, was established in 2011 as a joint project for the water and electric departments. During the lifetime of this project fund, the electric department overspent on equipment by $245,237.38. This over expenditure was offset by the equipment line for the water department. The electric department owes the water department to account for equipment the water department was unable to purchase through the project funds as a result of the overage. The cost of the equipment purchased by the water department's operating funds for the project totals $227,000, $227,220. This amendment transfers that amount from the electric fund to the waterfront. It's requested that the board adopt this budget amendment.
Board have questions on item number 14?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir.
Early on, we had some difficulties with the batteries and some of the readings. Have those things been corrected?
Yes, sir, they have. Any more discussion on item 14?
Make a motion, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Make a motion to adopt the budget ordinance amendments for FY 24.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bass.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Sorry.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Next up is appointments. Alderman Kinsey, I show you have one for the Board of Adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But if someone here, someone that they would like to recommend, I would like to speak with the individual and go from there, sir.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, I know we have several that's coming up. You sent us an email recently. Could you send us any applications for all of those positions that you have at some point in time?
Yes, we've just recently, within the last few days, received two, so I'll push those out before June 1st.
Very good, thank you. Any other appointments? Okay, move on to Attorney's Report.
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
You've been awfully quiet. This was your chance to speak up and nothing to say. All right, City Managers' Report.
Two items. During the budget work jobs last week, I was, I received directions to proceed with planning for a potential bond referendum during the 2025 election. To start this process, we're requesting that we hold a workshop on Tuesday, June 25th. That's the second meeting in June, starting at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. So let's see if that was suitable for everyone. At that meeting, we talked about the timeline and potential projects and get this all started.
What was that day then? June 1?
This, this is June, Tuesday, June 25th. The second, the date of the second board meeting, starting at 4:00 PM. at 4:00 PM.
Just a second, please.
Sure.
While everybody's looking, Mr. Hughes, you want to move on to the next one?
Yes. I want to ask Chief Gallagher to come up to give a brief crime update.
Mr. Manager, Mayor, Board, what I have provided for each of you is a high-level overview of really three parts. One is a comparison of crime stats that consists of data that we've collected in 2024, and we compared that over the same timeframe in 2023 as a comparable other. The other is the crime stat comparison for violent crime and property crimes for all of calendar year 2023, and the comparison other for that data is the previous year 2024. I also would like to briefly discuss our ShotSpotter program as it exists roughly 60 days into the program. And I'll end with the proactive calls for service that the men and women of the New Bern Police Department conducted in 2023. So the data that you see here reflects a four-month timeframe. And over that four-month timeframe, we saw a reduction of just slightly more than 15% across the board for Part One index crimes. We had one less homicide compared to the previous year's first four months. The greatest reduction was actually residential burglaries, where we had almost 42% reduction compared to the previous year. A 30% reduction in both the business burglaries and motor vehicle thefts. I compare that with two categories in violent crime. We did see an increase in the number of rape cases compared to last year and aggravated assaults compared to last year. And you can see the graph there to kind of help contextualize the data. One of the other things I want to point out is not only did crime, is crime reduced, that did not have a corresponding impact on the proactive and reactive approach of the officers that serve this community. When we compare the same timeframe from 2024 to 2023 with respect to officer activity, you can see that although crime is down, our activity is significantly higher. We made almost 42% more arrests over the course of the past four months. We handled almost 6% more calls for service. And in almost every category, we had more productivity from our officers. So part of what I think drives the reduction in criminal activity is the proactive and reactive approach that the men and women of the New Bern Police Department have engaged in. And if you also notice, we responded to more calls for service. A call for service is somebody in our community is either dialing 911 or a non-emergency number and is asking the New Bern Police Department to come and help them in some capacity. And you can clearly see that we have responded to more of those calls. So clearly, we have been very busy over the course of the past four months. On the bottom of page two, you see a comparison between violent crime and property crime. Nothing drives up the fear of crime as violent crime does. And as you can see, not a lot of detail. I didn't want to put a lot of that in here, and you will see that when we publish our 2023 annual report. Lot more detail in that document. But we had almost a 40% reduction in violent crime in the city of New Bern compared to the previous year. Now, we did have a slight increase. Now, this is 3.3% increase in property crimes. What does that mean? We, although that is an increase, compared to the increase across the country, violent crime is being reduced across the country, but property crime is rising tremendously higher throughout North Carolina and our country. But what we saw here in New Bern was a slight increase. I think there's a lot of optimism there. If you go to page three, roughly 60 days has transpired since we implemented ShotSpotter. And if you were to ask me, are we getting our money's worth, I would say, as Chief of Police, yes, we are seeing the results of this technology. We have had 14 activations in the past 30 days, correction, 60 days. That results in 86 registered rounds that were fired and captured by ShotSpotter. Of those 14 incidences, we have made five arrests. The incident that occurred on Saturday morning, no citizen contacted the police to notify us that there was a shot fired in the Sunnyside area of our city. It was because our officers responded, and the triangulation of where that shot was fired, they went to the backyard of the house in which we had reason to believe that is where the shot was fired. The officers were fired upon by persons inside the house. And I'm sure everybody is familiar with what happened thereafter. Thankfully, no one was hurt, especially our officers. But we value the sanctity of life, and we are very happy that no other person was hurt. But three people were arrested, two of which were adults and one was a juvenile. In the very last page, you will see this in our 2023 annual report. We responded to just north of 42,000 calls for service. I mentioned that before. The highest proactive measure in those 42,000 calls for service were traffic stops. One of the things that I, as the Chief of Police, when I first arrived here was, Chief, people are driving too fast. Chief, we have too many impaired drivers. So the impetus behind trying to impact driver behavior was one of the strategies that we've implemented. And clearly, you can see that the efforts made by our officers clearly dictated there. But 37% of all the calls that we handle has to do with what I call the community caretaker role, has nothing to do with the powers of law enforcement, or rather, we are trying to assist and mediate problems within our community. That's just a high-level overview of the crime stats, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have. If there are specific questions, I may have to come back with you with those specific data points.
Board have questions or comments for the Chief?
I have a question, Chief. Again, thank you for all that New Bern PD does. It is my understanding, if I'm correct, that ShotSpotter extended the one-mile radius on one particular occasion?
That is correct. ShotSpotter technology is sophisticated enough that it can extend well beyond that one-mile radius. The thing ShotSpotter will not guarantee is the exact position beyond that one mile as it does on the inside of that one mile. So it does extend approximately a mile beyond that. We're very fortunate to have the ability to go back and track that. But it's not a guarantee in ShotSpotter, or sound thinking really is the parent company. They don't guarantee that.
Thank you.
Looks like we got our money's worth with it.
Thanks to a particular Alderman.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I just want to make a comment. Kudos to you for reinstituting the VCU Violent Crimes Unit. I think it's pretty evident that it's effective, and they're doing a great job. And taking that proactive approach has proven to be very well in that reduction. So, good job.
Thank you.
Chief, I asked you a question a while back in reference to ShotSpotter about the funding. And I know that you were looking, have your department looked into any grants, forthcoming grants to support this program?
We continue to look for grant opportunities for ShotSpotter. But what we're also doing is connecting with stakeholders within our community. We have had a commitment from at least one. We have a meeting with a second. We have reached out to four different stakeholders to assist us in the funding of this program, not unlike what Greenville has seen in terms of their business model and how their community actually puts some skin in the game, so to speak, and to assist in the management and the payment of that program.
A thank you to you and your staff for all you do to keep our citizens safe here in the city.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, back to your request for a work session on Tuesday, June 25th, 4:00 PM. Tuesday, June 25th, at 4:00 PM at City Hall is what the manager is requesting. If that would work for the majority, I would need a motion and a second to entertain that. June the 25th, it's the same night we have a regular scheduled working.
At 4:00, right?
Yes, sir. 4:00.
I'm good.
Can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to have a, conduct a workshop here at the courtroom on Tuesday, June 25th, 4:00 PM, to take up information regarding a bond referendum.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good. Anything else, Mr. Hughes?
That's it for my side.
Okay, new business. Alderman Prill.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item. Last June, the board approved use of a little over $2,800 of ARP funding that was still available for Ward One. That approval was for the Quester organization to send a member of that group to two different training sessions up in Pennsylvania, one dealing with restoration of headstones, the other dealing with repairs, primarily focused on the mortar that was used 200 years ago on the brickwork. That representative completed the first training session and has been busy at work at Cedar Grove Cemetery restoring headstones. And the Quester organization has come back and asked if we could reallocate the second portion of that funding and put it towards the headstone restoration, because there's just so much work that needs to be done on that. They have decided to have that individual just focus on headstone restoration and not worry at this point about the kind of the brick and mortar side of that. So I'm just going to make a recommendation for your consideration that the balance of the funding that has not been used so far, which is $1,672.80, be reallocated towards the headstone restoration work.
I'm going to look to the attorney. When I got that email that you forwarded me last week, I spoke with the attorney just to make sure we were okay doing that. And Mr. Davis had a little bit of concern with the money being spent on the actual headstones, considering that the city doesn't own the headstones. I'm okay with it if there's a way that we can figure this out, because the Questers are doing the work, and it's almost like a grant we're giving them. But I just want to make sure we're good from that standpoint.
I do want to make a comment. About a year ago, when we had vandalism in the cemetery, we did allocate a certain amount of funds. They went to a contractor to fix the stones, but we have allocated funds for that in the past.
Okay. Okay. If it's good with staff, then I'm good with it. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion that the balance of the unused funding for the originally approved for training be reallocated for the Questers to use for the headstone restoration work in the amount of $1,672.80.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Question?
The headstones repair, is that for all of the cemeteries?
I'm sorry.
Which cemetery is it? Cedar Grove, is that correct?
Cedar Grove.
Specifically for one cemetery?
They could go. I don't know if the Questers do any work in the other cemeteries that the city has control over. I'm just aware of the work that they have done and continue to do at Cedar Grove Cemetery.
Okay. Because the parks are owned by the city, all the cemeteries, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's why I thought maybe they would spread the love.
Yeah. I don't know if the Quester organization ventures out of Cedar Grove. I suspect that they probably just focus on Cedar Grove, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Okay, the motion was to reallocate $1,672.80 of ARP funds from Ward One to move forward with repairs on headstones.
Yes.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Royal?
Not tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight.
Alderman Best?
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Brinson?
I guess to stay on cemetery theme, I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony on behalf of the city of New Bern yesterday. That was a great ceremony, a little hot. But we were also able to again acknowledge Sergeant Robert, Staff Sergeant Robert Ferris, the MIA that came back and was buried. The guest speaker was actually one of the laboratory technicians that helped identify him. So it was very appropriate that he was interred there recently. Couple of comments about Rees Across America. As you know, Kevin and Addie Yates are our representatives for the National Cemetery. I want to send requests for prayers out for Addie Yates. She has recently been diagnosed with cancer and has gone through surgery. And so just remember her in your prayers. Both Kevin and Addie have addressed us on several occasions. And then to the mayor's initiative to have groups adopt each of our cemeteries for Rees Across Americas. We know the African American Heritage Foundation has adopted Greenwood Cemetery. There is now a volunteer, Mr. John Pick and Miss Amanda, his wife, have adopted Cedar Grove. And so now they are asking for volunteers to show up at Cedar Grove on June 15th from 8:00 to 10:00. And what they're trying to do is gather an accurate count of the veterans buried at Cedar Grove Cemetery and record that number so that they can figure out how many Rees that they have to sponsor. And I'm sure the Questers would like to be involved in that. And so June 15th, again, 8:00 to 10:00, they will be out trying to figure out the number of veterans in Cedar Grove Cemetery. And then lastly, the New Bern Elks Lodge is having a Salute the Flag Day on Saturday, June 15th at 11:00 AM at Union Point, where I will be the guest speaker. And so if you can support that event as well. That's all I have.
Okay. The only comment I was going to make was sort of a follow-up to my earlier comments about the railroad. There's been three times now within the past month when I've been traversing downtown and been stuck by the train. I know some of you who live downtown have dealt with that for a while. And I know for years, we've heard about our drawbridge and the challenges that that brought. And this board was able to work with Coast Guard and other entities to get a schedule put together. Guard and other entities to get a schedule put together to help avoid those times. I certainly don't think we'll probably be able to get a schedule with the railroad based off of how they operate. But Friday night, I was doing a police ride-along, and we sat at Broad Street at a stop train for eighteen minutes. And the drawbridge is one thing. When the drawbridge goes up, you can sort of see what's going on, and you know the end is in sight. When you're sitting behind a train and traffic is, is lined up, and this was Friday night after the concert as well, so traffic was a little bit heavy. For a train to be able to sit on the track for that extended period of time, we sat there for eighteen minutes, and we were the fourth car in line, so it had been stopped prior to that. I don't know if there's anything we can do, but I'm just asking, can we reach out to Norfolk Southern and find out if we can get some sort of clarity on what their authority is for being able to block up traffic? I believe that it was blocked up all the way down to the farmer's market, so when it does that, you, sometimes you can't get around it. And from a public safety standpoint, obviously, it's a concern. I know we have cameras, and I know, you know, nine-one-one can tell us where it's blocked and certain things, but it's one thing to be sitting there if you're headed downtown to eat or get an ice cream cone, but it's another thing to be sitting there in a police vehicle with a call waiting for you to go answer, and you can't get around railroad track. So it was very eye-opening to me. Yes, sir?
The last time that my understanding is that we had an emergency, they can disconnect. I, I, I don't know where that stands at today.
I don't know. It's a great question, and we probably need to have, because we've had several meetings with the railroad. Alderman Prill's been involved with those, but every time we would ask an operational question, North Carolina Railroad would default at Norfolk Southern, because they're the one that's operating it. But that, that lay-down yard over there that they move forward and back and reconnect trains, you know, it would be great if we could relocate that to maybe the industrial part, where there's a rail line that runs right through there, which would be more appropriate. I don't know what that option would be, but I'd love to have a discussion with them to, to see what we could do.
At one time, they were considering of placing Coach City when I was dealing with the railroad.
Even better.
Yeah, they were considering a place out there. I don't know whatever it came of, but to answer your question about disconnecting, we always, they always told us they could do that as well. And when I say we, the fire department, the problem is, is that they disconnect, it takes longer for that train to air back up than it does if they were just to move. And, but good luck. I mean, I, I agree with you. It's a, it's a pain, but good luck getting any answers out of them.
I mean, if you think about River Station that's right across the street from, you know, their lay-down yard, that, that's prime for redevelopment, and I'm sure that the railroad operations across the street is probably not helping those efforts. So I know there seems to be quite a bit of money floating around in federal and state government, so maybe we could entice some of our elected officials to help entice the railroad to move their operation out of our, our town. Any other comments? Okay, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North Carolina General Session one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight-three, to maintain our attorney-client privilege in the matters of Richie versus City of New Bern and Lee versus City of New Bern.
So move. Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're in closed session.
Did you hear me, Mayor, say I'm gonna fire my attorney?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we are back in open session. Any, any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Have a motion.
She needs these votes, man.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Adjourn.